For staff, Ashley Kreitz, Executive Director of Urban Planning, Zach Pons, Director of Planning. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all of whom are appointed by the mayor, for staggered terms, with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask that the commission members introduce themselves and state their occupation, beginning with Miss Robyn left.
Me.
Yes, you.
Anne Hornsby, Attorney.
Couldn't tell if Rumsey was here.
Eddie Pugh retired.
Dina Prince, Attorney.
John Smith, Deputy Director of Urban Services.
And Bill Wright, Business Owner. There are signup sheets outside for public comment. If you do not sign up, you will still be given an opportunity to speak during the public portion of the agenda. The Commission will take up items in order of the agenda, and the Commission will then receive a presentation from the staff. The Commission will not vote tonight regarding recommending or not recommending the proposed text amendments. Note that the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body for the zoning text and zoning map changes. The City Council is the final authority. After the staff presentation, the floor will be opened for public comment. Individuals wishing to express support or opposition will be given three minutes to speak. Only the Planning and Zoning Commission can grant a specified time extension to an individual. Public comment will be received, the floor closed to public comment, and the Commission will open discussion among themselves, reserving the opportunity to vote to accept or reject any proposed changes for final agenda consideration at the review meetings that will take place in 2024. These proceedings are video-recorded and broadcast live. All public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction. Regarding zoning text amendments, Section 115276 of the Code of State of Alabama states, "The legislative body of such municipalities shall provide for the manner in which such regulations and restrictions and the boundaries of such districts shall be determined, established, and enforced from time to time, amended, supplemented, or changed, and may adopt such ordinances as may be necessary to carry into effect and make effective the provisions of this article." The Planning and Zoning Commission serves as a recommending body to the legislative body. While the zoning text amendments will be considered in pieces, they will not be enforced until the full zoning text is adopted and the zoning map changes implemented. In layman's terms, if there is a vote at any point to recommend changes, they will not be enforced on any property until the City Council adopts the zoning text and the zoning map changes formally through many public hearings. At this time, I want to ask, do any members of the Commission have any conflicts of interest or possible conflicts for any topics on the agenda for discussion this evening? If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, we will begin. Ms. Kreitz?
There's nothing like thunking 300 some odd pages down on the podium. I tried to do it quietly. All right. It is good to be back with you. I know we have taken a bit of a hiatus, and it's for good reason. 300 and some odd pages of a good reason. We wanted to make sure that by the time we came back together, that we had this thing pretty buttoned up, understanding also, though, that there were going to be some challenges. There were going to be some things that, taking it piece by piece and seeing how they interact together, we may have some things we've got to address. So, really quickly, setting those meeting expectations, we'll begin at 5:00 and end at 7:00. If we don't get finished with something, it's going to roll into the next scheduled meeting. We'll utilize a three-minute timer that will be available to all parties on the screen, and the Planning Commission can grant folks extra time if they need it, and then staff is going to manage that flow of the meeting for efficiency's sake. For tonight's meeting, we don't have that much extra to get into, but as you'll see, as we set the schedule for the rest of these meetings, buttoning it back up and making sure we stay on task and on target is going to be really beneficial for all of us. So remember that this code rewrite is maintaining what works today, updating what doesn't. I think you've seen that through this document as a whole. We're making the code more user-friendly, implementing the comprehensive plans recommendations, creating new zoning districts, getting rid of some that don't really work well for us, and updating our development standards and permitted uses. Our zoning ordinance update process, of course, is coming in two pieces, and we are wrapping up this zoning text portion of our lives. We have gone through the zoning text and the purpose intensity and dimensional standards, and we'll walk through, take a trip down memory lane, if you will, the development standards, our use standards, and we will get into the zoning map starting at the end of January. A collective gasp across the room. But the time has come, folks. It is, it is here, it is upon us. So, making sure that we're on the same page again, that zoning code does have limits. Of course, we are setting minimum standards for site and building designs, et cetera. We're supporting public health and safety, desirable building characteristics through this. It does apply to new development and redevelopment, and then it does set requirements for applications, public notice review, public input approval. What we can't do with this brand-new shiny zoning ordinance is remove existing property rights or force existing development to change. You know, as soon as it is adopted by the City Council, everything moving forward from there, it will apply to, but current development, no. We can't regulate issues outside of what's permitted by the state of Alabama. So, for example, cannabis-based uses or other things that the state of Alabama is just like, "We're not here yet." We also can't do that. And then prevent construction of approved developments or proposals. Again, if something is approved, it is still approved. So, our zoning code articles, we've got eight sections that we have been through before as we led up to tonight. And so I think what we want to do this evening, to be cognizant of everyone's time and the feedback we've received so far, is to remind ourselves where we've been and look forward to where we're going for the rest of this, and continue to implore, to implore everyone to give feedback, to run through this thing, to test it, to make sure that it works. So in terms of where we have been, let's hop in that Wayback Machine, all the way to April 6th of 2022, and we started talking about our single-family residential districts. We got into our open space, our business districts, our industrial districts in May, our university districts, institutional, our lake districts, which is, again, remember, a brand-new thing for us. We don't have lake-specific zoning, and I think this is really going to be beneficial for us. Our downtown and river districts hit in the summertime last year, single-family residential districts that have a little bit more oomph behind them, a little bit more density, along with our nonconformities and definitions. By October, we started looking at development standards, off-street parking, fences and walls, lighting, our planned developments in November. December, we started to look at our subdivision regulations, and I want us all to be on the same page that we will wrap up our zoning ordinance and then get into the subdivision regulations. We have to make sure that the zoning is in place before we start changing the subdivision regulations. It also will allow the Office of the City Engineer to hopefully get their Tuscaloosa Transportation Standards executed as well, because those two documents will go hand-in-hand. In February, we took a look at more development standards, and you'll see mobility and connectivity, landscape and buffering, open space, neighborhood compatibility, form and design, and some green building incentives. March, we started to wrap things up a little bit more, and we started looking at general provisions, rules of measurement, administration, and a few residential districts that somehow snuck past us. And then we wrapped up our discussions with signs and billboards and use regulations. I did not count as I was making these slides, but I feel like that was about 10, 12 meetings. And all of these documents, all of these things have been online for feedback. We have gotten feedback through this process, each and every meeting. We've heard from folks that said, "Ooh, this, this may need to change a little bit, and hey, have you thought about this?" But truly, once it all got into one document, one thing in front of you that you could flip between the pages, I think that's when it's really started to come together for folks, and we knew that that would happen, and that's okay. So, we took that full text, and we circulated it on November 3rd. We finally got it beaten into a place where we felt confident in being able to send it out. And so you can see that list of folks who received it November 3rd, there is always somebody, you know, and I'm sure people hit forward, and I'm glad for that. The more people who can put eyes on it and test it, the better. It went on the website the same day, and so we have been reviewing it again as staff. The number of times that we have sat down to take a look at this thing and fight through it, the staff behind me, Mr. Pons, they're all so tired of me going, "Okay, but what if?" But the what-ifs are legitimate, and we need to continue to ask, "But what if?", so that by the time this is adopted, we're ready. But again, I implore you, we need feedback. We need feedback. Whoever is in this room, whoever is watching, I need feedback, because I can take a look at plans that have been presented to us in the past, I can run them through this, but who better to hear from than the person who actually built it and says, "Hey, I couldn't have done this in this current zoning." Something like that wakes you up and says, "Oh, man, how did we miss that? How is that density a little bit screwy that this development that we think is really great couldn't be constructed as proposed?" So I need folks to take a look at their old developments and compare it, see if it could still be built. You know, we've got a staff of, Mr. Pons has a staff of five professionals, the admin team has three professional staff, we've got some data analysts and some GIS analysts as well. We've, we've got folks who can do it, but we're also doing other things, so I need help. End of story.
On that front, Ashley, what kind of feedback did you get? I mean, I know, like you said, it's coming into focus because it is becoming a hard document now.
Yeah.
And we got feedback as we were tackling each segment, correct?
Yeah.
Now, what's coming in now? What are you, what are you hearing, and what feedback are you getting?
So we, the group that we sent it out to, we've heard from about three individuals so far with some good, hard feedback regarding either some proposed projects that they ran it through and said, "Hey, I think I'm doing this right, and I don't know that my development would have worked in the zoning that I think it would have been rezoned to." And so we're helping that developer take a look at things and make sure they did read it correctly, and if there is an issue, let's work to figure out if it is something we want to address or if it's something that we're comfortable leaving as is.
What was confusing part of it? I mean, like, our whole goal of this thing was to make it very simple, I thought, where you could...
Oh, it is. It's simple.
Is it just that developers always pushing the edges and envelope, or is it...
You said it, not me. No, it's, it's, it is one of those where the terminology that this individual and I use may be a little bit different. And so just making sure that they are thinking about it in terms of, when we say "units", we mean actual units that have a front door, not individual bedrooms within a unit. And I think that may be a little bit of a confusion just initially for that individual. But the rest of the folks have been talking about, you know, it's nice to be able to see some of their comments reflected in the changes that have happened within some sections. And so, you know, seeing that is really nice, and it has been nice as staff as well. We get to go through, and we're like, "Oh, they did fix, you know, this got fixed, great. We see that reflected in, in what we're doing." So, we're getting, we're getting through it. It's just a process like this with a zoning ordinance that was as old as ours, it's going to take, it's going to take a minute. And especially not wanting to upset the apple cart so much that we find ourselves in a Tuscaloosa-forward scenario. You know, it's this very fine line of modernizing while also maintaining. And when you've got competing interests, you know, what is, what, where is our best practice between the neighborhood groups and the business groups?
One specific question I had when you were presenting, you talked about it was that if a plan was approved, our development was approved, then when this goes into effect, that plan would still be approvable or still good.
Yeah.
What, what happens in the scenario where time lapses on that approval, and they got to come back before staff or before this body asks for an extension? Is that, is that same plan still carried, they're, they're by the new rules then?
New rules.
They've lost that window of opportunity to do what they did.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Great question.
Any other questions for Ms. Kreitz? We've got people that have signed up.
Well, I was going to talk about where we're going.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, but I do just want to say, as councilwoman, I appreciate, I, I think our city does have the best practices for so much, but especially with this, because I hear conversations from the chamber, the downtown merchants, I see the agenda items from Tuscaloosa Neighbors Together. So I know that the way that we, we publicize things and we have our, our information out there, it, it makes it very easy and efficient for the community, because as councilwoman, I hate to hear people say, "I didn't know about that meeting," or "I didn't know about this," but I know for a fact that the way that you all put this together and streamlined and, and have everything online, it's just very effective, and I appreciate it. And I know we have the best practices, but especially when it comes to projects like this and framework, and making sure that it's not just about our business community, but also for our neighborhoods, which is important for me, you know, making sure everybody's included, especially our stakeholders. So thank you so much.
Thank you for saying that. I appreciate it a lot. Let's talk about where we're going really quickly, and then we've got a public comment on the agenda. So I think as we move forward, one of the things you probably saw within this text is there's some items that we've still got to wrestle as a group, and we still need to wrestle through some discussions on sober living facilities and where those can locate. It was a new concept that popped up while we were doing, you know, in the last year and a half that we've been talking about these individual sections, sober living facilities popped up, and of course, just ongoing discussions about bars, gastropubs, and alcohol-based uses, event spaces, things of that nature. We've got to wrap up some of those discussions in this process. And so be on the lookout for maybe a 30-minute, you know, as we're doing a map meeting, maybe we have a 30-minute discussion time set aside to suss out one of these items as a group. We're going to be busy, y'all. As we get into our map meetings, this is a familiar slide, but it is, it bears, bears recall, the future land use categories versus our zoning categories. As we get into these map meetings, we had the luxury, staff had the luxury, I will say, during the future land use character map time, because that map was created as a result of the work of the Steering Committee. The proposed zoning map is being created by staff using existing zoning, using the future land use character map, using current uses. And so our staff, in their professional judgment, is assigning a zoning district to, to each individual property. So we're going to be kind to staff as we go through this process, because we have been poring over things to make sure that we get it right, but it will be, you know, we can catch 90% of things, but I also need, you know, again, a call to action, but if you have property that you're concerned with, look at the map when we get there. Make sure we get it right, because this is that time where, when we begin to literally change the colors on a map, once it's done, it's a zoning amendment that goes through the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend or not recommend approval, which then goes to the City Council, and the City Council gives it an up-down vote. So, again, we're going to be methodical, just like we were with our future land use character map, take it area by area, which worked out really nicely the last time, gave us opportunities to really dig into things instead of being sporadic and taking on the entire city. So, each individual future land use category can contain multiple zoning districts. As you see today, our today zoning could fit into multiple traditional neighborhood core categories, suburban residential could also take on R1, 2, and 3, multifamily residential, et cetera. So, our future land use character map, though, of course, was not a mandate for development or rezoning, it was simply a policy guide that we are using in order to implement the zoning updates that we have been discussing. So we'll implement it through the zoning regulations, and then public and private investment decisions. Remember, again, multiple zoning districts could be appropriate to implement a future land use character type, and as we put that first color on the paper, we are using our best judgment as trained professionals. That also, though, I will say, doesn't mean it's an absolute. We just come at it with our best, our best judgment. So, our future land use and character map categories will help to guide our processes, and what you'll get to see as we take it section by section, just like we did future land use character map, you'll have, you'll have a map that looked a little bit like that, and you may, in the middle of a meeting, see, "Hey, this was, this was our original, what we put out there to start with on that left-hand side, and then we realized as we were flipping through it and hearing discussion from stakeholder groups leading up to the meeting, that we did need to make some changes, because the city owns property all the way down into here, and we needed to take that in as institutional public, and there's some heavy industrial district that needs to change." So you will continue to have a very familiar process once we get back into the swing of So, with that, any questions on where we're going? The timeline will come after public comment.
All right. This point will open up to public comment. We have two people that have signed up. Alisa Johnson?
Hi, thank you so much for opening the floor for us. I'm here as the President of the Woodland Forest Association of Homeowners and as a Concerned Resident on Spice Wood Street, too. Where I have heard from my neighbors, where the concern is at, is the property that borders behind Spice Wood there, where along the edge of the neighborhood, are the buffer areas. And so I wanted to talk about that section and just some concerns that we have and considerations for you, the Commission, and, and the city. And again, thank you for the hard work you guys are all doing to set the rules and the regulations to, to keep Tuscaloosa on track. One of the questions that's come up is the measurement for the buffer area. Does that include the slope, or is that a straight line from the property line? As we know, Tuscaloosa is not a flat area. I'm from the Midwest, Southwest, so I know what flat is. And so as, as we look at, what is 30 feet at the consideration right now? Is that the land that's uphill from me, or is that 30 feet deep into that land? The property immediately behind Spice Wood is uphill from all of our backyards, so anything that does go in back there will shine down into all of our bedrooms on the backsides of our houses. So that brings me to the buffer areas. Right now, when I looked at it, I see that we have before the residential areas between commercial zoning, that there is a, the suggestion for B, which is 30 feet deep for option A, or, or 20 feet for option, option two, sorry, option one, option two. What we would like to see as a consideration is that we move that to, to A for what is currently deemed industrial with 40 feet deep and a thicker growth there. We are woodland forest, we would like to keep the woodland forest feel around our neighborhood, and that includes the backside of us as well that protects us from the noise and the, the lights that have already happened with the development of the jacks there and with some changes along the interstate, too. Previously, what I'm also hearing further, deeper into the neighborhood, back towards Overbrook, is that for the first time, they're now hearing the interstate sounds that they had not heard previously, that we kind of heard on Spice Wood, and now we definitely hear in our living rooms. So those are kind of sound, as we talk about sound barriers and what can be done there, that we just ask for some extra consideration for, for deeper buffer zones there. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Barth?
Joan Barth, 5541 Woodbury Lane. You know, ditto, he's my neighbor, right? And those are, those are those concerns, especially this vertical versus horizontal, which I'm sure that's not a new, a new issue. But I'm also here as President of Tuscaloosa Neighbors Together, and I know you've received some comments from Wanda Muzan, who's on our, on our board. I don't have any specific comments tonight, but I wanted to let you know that just because I'm not making a comment doesn't mean that I'm not paying attention. And so I read through the neighborhood standards, the buffers and so on, and we're really trying, it's hard, it's really hard, you know, to put it all together, and we don't have a new development to run it through, but we know what our threats are to our neighborhoods. And so this buffer between any kind of commercial zone and an existing undeveloped commercial zone, right, and an existing neighborhood is where we're focusing some of our attention. So things along Skyland. So when that map gets colored in, then we'll be able to look more specifically at those considerations. But in any case, thank you for all of your, your work. I didn't want you to think, since I haven't seen you in a few months, that I wasn't paying attention, and I'll, we'll continue to, to monitor it, and we're trying to get the word out. I think when the maps are out, I think that's easier for people to get, and I think we'll be able to do more with publicizing it and getting out into the communities. So thank you.
That's the last person who's signed up, but would anyone care to speak about the matters before us tonight? Okay? All right, having heard none, anyone else? Anyone sign up to speak online, or any documents come in?
Almost none online.
All right, well, keep saying it's online forever. Anybody, well, I guess we'll close discussion in public standpoint, I guess, any comments from the commission members? I think Councilwoman Howard said it very well, I think y'all have done a great job. You made our job easy. We just got to go show up and hear what you've been doing all this time.
Well, we're here to make your job easy, so it's symbiotic in that sense.
Well, this has been a long, it's still a long process, but, you know, I was around, I first started on this commission when we had the, after the tornado, and we did it so rapidly, and there were so many flaws. And I know this has been a long process, but it's probably doing good due diligence, and I think we'll have a better product at the end of the day and have to worry about making fewer corrections when it's all said and done, so I applaud staff as well. Any other comments or any questions, statements? Anything else?
Let's talk some next steps.
Okay.
All right. So January 3rd, we will be back in this room, again, hopefully with some additional feedback from folks and places where we tell you where we know there are some challenges and how we have gotten those addressed, or what we propose doing to address them. And then January 31st, we will do our first zoning map meeting, the Tuscaloosa, North Tuscaloosa and Lakes area with the airport as well. We will move into West Tuscaloosa, February 28th, the downtown and university area, March 27th, Alberta-McFarland corridor in May, and in June, we will do the Highway 69 South corridor and the Skyland corridor. And in July, our goal is to recommend some level, July-August recommendation vote, let's send this to council, and let's get it in a good place. Now, I know I have been, I have been warning us in between good things tonight, but there is going to be a lot of heavy work again in these next seven months. There'll be some times where I ask Zach if we can tack on a 30-minute discussion to a regular planning commission meeting, so we can get through something, because I don't want to add, we've already added one extra meeting to your, to your month, I don't want to add two, but I also do want to make sure that we don't let the grass grow under our feet with this, and that we do, we can work a map in the text together. grow under our feet with this, and that we do, we can work a map in the text together. And I've said to a few folks lately, you know, I know we had initially talked about hopefully adopting the zoning ordinance and just letting it sit until we have the map adopted. And then I had a horrible, horrible thought, "What if something is awry, and we do need to go back and fix it, that a buffer may not be correct," or something along those lines, and this shiny new zoning ordinance already has a fix in it before we've even fully implemented it? So, we're going to work these two things parallel. I'm so sorry, go.
No, no, can you show the rest of the calendar there?
Yes.
Well, I guess all those dates that we have are dates after our regular scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes.
So if there's a need to get something on our regular schedule, I mean, to address the need that's coming up on this calendar.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, and it may be something like that discussion about a sober living house, or where we think we need to go with the bar and gastropub discussion. So I don't envision, you know, and of course, everything will get advertised, everything will be out there, so we know when these discussions are happening, and that everyone is at the table that needs to be at the table and who wants to be at the table. But just recognizing that, you know, we have been really good stewards of our time. I mean, this evening, it's just now 5:30. We could just spend another hour and a half looking at each other, but I don't feel that that's necessary. And as we move through the rest of this, and we have opportunities to have tough discussions, I believe we'll have plenty of time. I'm confident in very few sticking points happening in the map process. Very heavy exhale.
Sound like a plan.
We'll get through this together. So, that is where we are, and if y'all are good with that timeline, then we'll put that schedule on framework.tuscaloosa.com, and with the maps, like we did for the future land use character map, it will start to roll out about, it'll be a month beforehand, and we'll push it out and say, "Hey, friends, the zoning map for North Tuscaloosa is available on framework.tuscaloosa.com." And just like we did, where folks could stick a dot and say, "I think this is wrong, we're going to do that again," because that worked so nicely, and it gave us such a good opportunity to take a look at it ahead of time and not be surprised or have to scramble and say, "Wait, what is that, what's happening?" We can do our research ahead of time as well. Not that there won't be stick-a-dot moments in the middle of a meeting, but having that dot opportunity to say, "Oh, yeah, that absolutely should be changed. We got that wrong. The city owns that, why would we color it that?" So, those moments will be really beneficial. As always, framework.tuscaloosa.com is your one-stop shop for all things framework. Please review anything. Please provide comments. Zach and I love your comments. We're the ones who get those emails, so if you've got anything, please submit comments, take a look at the schedule, and Mr. Wright?
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Okay, good.